Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to call as a, we are now as the Drainage Trustees. I need to approve approval of the tentative agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Courtney, would you please read the minutes of the previous meeting? What's that?
Webster County is waiting nine o'clock.
Webster County just got on.
Yeah. Do you need to go to item seven first?
Seriously? What if I don't want to? Okay. Is there making me go tonight conference call with Webster County for Drainage District forty-six ninety-two?
Yes, so we have now received the Commissioner's Report of Benefit that was done by, excuse me, by Agribia and the two Commissioners that were appointed, Matt Oddland for Wright County and Perry Black for Webster County. So we have that and we already previously had gotten from Agribia the Engineers Report, the Volunteering Annexation, so we just need to set the date and time for the public hearing to have both of those presented to the landowners and the board.
You have a date and time?
Yep, so that date was August four, yes. Would be the earliest we could schedule it.
And does that work for Webster County?
Checking. For the record, we have Crystal Lloyd Drainage Clerk, Nathan Montgomery, myself, Nikki Conrad, and Bob Foad here at the meeting.
And we also have Dean Cluse, Ashley Boss, me, Rick Rasmussen, Lynn Lukes, and Betty Ellis, and numerous other people I don't care to mention at this point. And our Drainage Administrator, Courtney.
Thanks, Rick.
Yeah, you're welcome, anytime.
I'll be in Canada, but if you guys can go.
Will not be able to be on.
Can you make that work?
Is there, is there a date that works better for Webster County? You can be there.
Uh, I, this is Nikki. I know that I will be out. We're just trying to see if the rest of the, the crew will be able to be there.
Gotcha.
More than likely, I think, yes.
Good deal.
Yeah.
I would make a motion that we set the, uh, the date of August fourth at zero nine thirty for a public hearing on joint drainage district forty-six ninety-two Engineers Report for voluntary annexation and the Commissioners' report of benefits.
And you want it at nine thirty or at nine o'clock?
Uh, does, does nine o'clock work for you, Webster?
Either way. Yeah, either way.
Or, or do you want it after, do the drainage after the regular meeting? How long do you think it'll take?
I don't know how many questions there is of landowners.
Let's do it afterwards, after the meeting.
I should go like ten.
Okay.
Ten o'clock maybe?
Let's, uh, let's set it for ten o'clock. The rest of the motion remains the same, August fourth.
I'll second, Montgomery.
All in favor? Uh, Wright County?
Aye.
All ayes, Wright County?
All in favor, Webster?
Aye, all ayes in Webster.
Thank you.
Anything else that we need to do with them, Courtney?
Uh, nope, that is it for the conference call.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great day.
Okay, now we'll get back to the approval of the minutes. Would you read them, please?
All right, the minutes for June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Wright County Board of Supervisors met in regular session as trustees of the Drainage Districts with the following members present. Rick Rasmussen, Dean Cluse, Lynn Lukes, Ashley Bosch, and Betty Ellis. Also present were Courtney Morris Drainage Administrator and Amanda Meyer Auditor. Other interested parties were the Wright County Monitor. Motion by Rasmussen and seconded by Cluse to call the meeting to order, motion carried. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Lukes to approve the tentative agenda, motion carried. Minutes of the previous meeting on June second, twenty twenty-five were read and approved. There were no drainage claims for payment needing approval. There were two work orders that were reviewed and approved. There were for DD sixty on the relief and section twenty-three of Lincoln Township for a blowout. Requesters stated that the tile feels crushed and it's an eighteen or twenty-two inch tile. The second one is for DD one thirty in section four of Lincoln Township, and it was reported as a tile blowout on a ten inch or fourteen inch tile. Morse presented the following six drainage invoices. Those six are listed there for Agribia, uh, the tile pros, Matt Oddland, Perry Black, and two for Holland Contracting. Uh, motion by Bosch and seconded by Rasmussen to adjourn the meeting, motion carried.
Any additions or corrections? If not, they stand approved as read. Open forum for a public input regarding drainage districts. Review and act on any drainage work orders, which I don't think we have any doing.
Work orders. You do have claims, though.
Yes, review and sign any open drainage invoices. And that was for me, and I've done that.
There's three of them.
I had one.
You had one?
I signed it.
Great, did you sign them? Thank you.
The first one was for Rick's district. This is the request by Don Goman that went out to Mozam Construction. This was for Drainage District one oh nine on the main, and it came in at one thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars and seventy cents. The second one was for Lynn's district, reported by Donald Goman in Drainage District thirty. This came in at one thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents from Mozam. And the last one was previously Carl, which is now Betty's, was in Drainage District seventy-six on the main. Uh, this is amount of eleven thousand five hundred and forty dollars from Mansky Farm Drainage.
Motion approved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes? Betty?
Aye.
Thank you.
Approved claims.
What's that?
Approved claims. New basket.
Oh, approved. We've already made that motion and we.
Motion to approve the drainage claims as they were presented this morning.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes? Anything else before the board?
That's it.
Thank you, Courtney.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Sir.
Very soon.
Oh.
Bye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes? Okay, now we'll convene as Board of Supervisors. I need approval of the tentative, thank you, I need approval of the tentative agenda.
Make a motion to approve the tentative agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes? Would you read the minutes, please, of the previous meeting?
June sixteen, twenty twenty-five, the Board of Supervisors met as Drainage District Trustees to be the minutes from the drainage meetings to the Drainage District minutes on the county website. Darren Rasmussen called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine oh five AM. Members present were Chris Bosch, Rasmussen, Lukes, and Ellis. Motion by Ellis, seconded by Lukes to approve the tentative agenda, motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of June ninth, twenty twenty-five were read and approved with corrections. Approved claims for payment. Daryl Stephen Carlisle, Wright County Economic Development Director, and Bruce Rawl, City of Woolstock Mayor, discussed with the board the urban renewal area for the city of Woolstock. Carlisle met with Rawl and the city clerk to discuss the possibilities utilizing the urban renewal area and TIF tax increment financing for city of Woolstock. The city's water treatment plant is in need of repairs and utilizing these could help repair the plant. Carlisle then presented Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, giving consent to the city that this city may exercise the urban renewal powers with respect to the said party. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Bosch to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three to approve inclusion of certain property in the twenty twenty-five Woolstock urban renewal area of the city of Woolstock, Iowa. By roll call vote, ayes. Cluse, Bosch, Rasmussen, Lukes, and Ellis, nays, none, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three duly passed as many cases. And you will see the full resolution there. Steve Bean, President of Lake Crinilia Improvement Association and other members of the Association, met with the board to discover the warning system at Lake Crinilia. The current warning system was installed in two thousand eight and cost eighteen thousand dollars with a warranty of five years. The Association does not have insurance to cover the warning system, but Wright County can carry the insurance because it is on county property. The batteries that were purchased by Wright County cost about four hundred and eighty dollars. Supervisor Rasmussen stated that there needs to be an inspection completed annually. Lake Crinilia Improvement Association is not looking to pay for any improvements for the current system or a new system. Bean mentioned he would like to use preempt township budget to utilize dollars for the warning system. Electronic engineering is coming in the near future to look at the current system and give an idea on what needs to be done. It was asked who currently owns the well at Lake Crinilia, and Bean responded the Lake Association has operational control over the well and is responsible for maintaining it. Supervisor Ellis will hold a meeting with the Association and Township along with Conservation Director to go over options. Eric Simonson, Wright County Attorney, presented additional information on the agenda item that was tabled from June second to increase the annual salary of the Attorney's Office Manager. The board asked that he review the budget for his department and see if it was able to accommodate the rates. Simonson was able to review his budget, and he does see that his budget will be able to handle a salary of fifty-nine thousand. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Ellis to approve the annual salary of fifty-nine thousand for office for the Office Manager in the County Attorney's Office effective July first, twenty twenty-five, motion carries. Adam Clemmons, Wright County Engineer, presented fuel bids for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. There were three bids submitted. Motion by Ellis, seconded by Cluse to accept the fuel bid from A Banish FS at zero point zero seven nine cents over rack price on Gasol Hall Premium Grade Diesel and Arctic Diesel. Motion carries. Simmons presented Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, adjustment to specific bid bridge embargoes. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Lukes to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. By roll call vote, ayes, Cluse, Bosch, Rasmussen, Lukes, and Ellis, nays, none, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one duly passed as many cases as follows. You'll see the resolution there. Simmons presented Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, a policy for drainage tile crossing and parallel tile with secondary roads right away. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Ellis to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two. By roll call vote, ayes, Cluse, Bosch, Rasmussen, Lukes, and Ellis, nays, none, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two duly passed as many cases as follows. And you'll see the resolution there. Simmons gave enough to down the secondary roads department. Peggy Schulten, Wright County Treasurer, presented a notice of termination on the twenty-eight E agreements with the city of the program, this to be a full bill. This twenty-eight E agreement is for parking tickets in the said cities. The Treasurer's Office receives a list from the cities and then goes into the DOT system to put a stop on their accounts. Schulten ever said her office is doing a lot more they, than they had in the past and only get five dollars from each ticket paid. The notice of termination, termination will give a ninety-day notice, which would be September fifteenth, to the cities. Motion by Ellis, seconded by Cluse to approve the notice of termination of the twenty-eight E agreement with the city of the growth and the city of Goldfield concerning to liquid parking tickets and have the chairman sign, motion carries. Amanda Meyer, Wright County Auditor, asked the board to remove Devon's sign from the online control of the county credit cards and designate Meyer with basic user access. Ellis asked to keep this sign on and add Meyer also. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Ellis to add Amanda Meyer, Wright County Auditor, to have basic user access to the online control of the county credit cards, motion carries. Dr. John Aronson asked to remove Brian Root Piper as a medical examiner investigator for Wright County. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Ellis to remove Brian Root Piper as medical examiner investigator for Wright County, motion carries. Motion by Ellis, seconded by Lukes to approve two firework permit applications submitted by four G pyrotechnics, motion carries. The permits are for July fifth at Lake Crinilia and August fifteenth at the power show by Belmont. An old business Sandy McGrath, Wright County Public Health Director, mentioned that thirty-two employees are now CPR certified. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Bosch to adjourn.
Any additions or corrections? If not, they stand approved as read. Claims have been around? Anyone from the public like to speak? Okay, it's past our time, so I guess you don't get to speak, Jay.
Perfect.
Sorry about being a little late, but.
That's all right.
This will right on time.
Oh, that clock needs to be fixed.
No, we don't have a good maintenance person. We had a maintenance person.
He's trying to paint that lobby up there, so.
Okay, it's nine fifteen, Jay Lafeever. First gave us an A C to present the ICAP property and casualty renewal for for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, good morning. Our committee met, uh, June tenth. Three of the supervisors attended with us, Amanda was at our town every bit fast that day. During our review, uh, we had a Zoom call with you guys a couple months ago, talking about increasing the valuation on equipment. Doing that resulted in our overall property going from forty-one million to fifty-three million, which is roughly new twenty-two, twenty-three percent. One of the main things in that was increasing the jail from five million to ten million. The committee is recommending that we increase building deductible to five thousand, equipment to a thousand. That offsets three thousand dollars in premium. Business auto remained flat this year, general liability and umbrella had small increases. You'll see on page three, the premium summary. So with the increase in property of twenty-two percent, overall premium went up less than thirteen percent. We felt that was a red, good thing by ICAP. In past year, we had eleven auto claims, nothing of significance. The property damage loss, um, that went to ninety-nine thousand was on the real grader. Adam, if you want to speak to that, you can.
Which one?
I think when we hit the radio truck.
Oh, the dump truck.
Dump truck.
Oh, dump truck, yeah, yeah. So it was, uh, his blade went down, uh, high draw failure.
I think ninety thousand was that one, wasn't it?
Eighty, eighty-eight. Yeah, somewhere eighty to ninety.
And then, then we had a small fire in an engine compartment, right?
Does he have one?
Yeah. So nothing of big significance there outside of the truck. IMWCA, our mod went from point five seven to point five eight. Not a big deal, that's a rounding calculation, and we had one small loss, um, in the Sheriff's Department. Supervisors have questions?
How we sit on the courthouse insurance? Did we bump that up?
So ICAP is coming around after July first to re-inspect and create the valuation for us. So we're still at fifteen million right now, and we know that's not enough coverage. I went to two different contractors last year, Betty had given me plans on a zip drive, but nobody had time to really put the work into getting that done for us. We asked for it to be done for free, so that probably had a small impact to it. But, so ICAP is willing to do it.
So we'll find out sometime after July?
Yep. Yeah, what that looks like. We requested to see a quote at thirty million. ICAP said without valuation done, they didn't want to put that number out there.
But, but they will put a number out there after they come and look at the number?
Yes. Yeah, so we're on a five-year rotation. They did it two years ago, but they didn't look at the courthouse when they came around that time, so they're gonna come out and do it now.
Excellent.
Yes.
So that, that would be in time with, in property values where we would see that?
Yes.
Increase, okay?
Yep.
Should we expect that to be proportional to that twenty-three percent increase equated to a thirteen percent increase?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I think that's a fair way to look at it. It's, you know, Andy can speak to this as well during the committee meeting. None of us really wanted to attach a number to it, but I mean, it's.
I can understand that.
And we talked about Marshall County and the tornado that they had. We talked about Dallas County and the bid that, or their referendum to try and get a new courthouse that didn't pass, but that was eighty-two million, I think.
As the jail attached, wasn't it?
I'm not sure if jail was attached to that one or not. So, yeah, I mean, we have a unique courthouse. I think everybody wants to see it remain the way it is. So we'll see what number they come with.
Also, um, you kind of talked about IMWCA and that our mod went from point five seven to point five eight, but we still get the twenty. It did go down, um, just for the newspaper, five thousand.
Down, yes, five thousand dollars.
Five thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, so that went down. Thank you to the Safety Committee, um, that, that continues to work.
Yeah, we try to meet monthly, sometimes it's every other month, but, um, your department heads do a really good job of keeping safety first.
And Jay, what's the dollar amount for that saving overall?
About a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
A year?
Yes, annually.
What is a hundred and ten?
Uh, the savings by having your mod at a point five eight. So IMWCA is allowed to add additional credit for longevity of an account and Safety Committee work on it, which they have done. So the county is receiving the maximum discount that they can.
It's a lot.
Yes. Makes a big difference.
So we need to approve this amount, and then when we get, when ICAP has looked at the courthouse, then we'll readdress?
Yeah.
Any premium increase?
Yes, along with that, Amanda and I had discussed paying it after July first. The county is always paid ahead, and it's not required by ICAP. ICAP has a form that we have signed allowing you to pay after the first of the year, so you can get the premium back in the right year for you. And I believe that's what.
Yes, we'll pay it on July seventh, and I'll give it a week to get there.
But we will have, we will have a gap in coverage?
You will not have a gap in coverage.
From the form.
Yeah. And it, it continue form.
Yep.
Super.
So you'll, you'll approve this, and then we also discussed with, when Jay was on Zoom that one day about where to pay this from. Um, it was recommended or talked about paying it all out of general supplemental. If you guys want to do that, or if you want to keep it. General supplemental pays for you guys, and then Conservation pays, and Adam pays, and then Tony pays for her.
That's how we currently do it, correct? And, and is there additional savings, or it's just a reduction in?
There is no impact to us. It, it really is an accounting function for the county.
Which way would you like it to go?
Out of the general supplemental. It, it'd be easier, I think.
The, the part that, you know, as we try to continue to lower our levy rates, that paying it out of supplemental, it'll be tougher to get that lower because there's more expenses coming out. I feel Tony is her own taxing entity, and so she should pay for her own, I think it's just vehicle and IMWCA. Uh, we're, we're just talking, um, copy, right? So, because IMWCA is, was in today's claims, right? So I feel she should pay, I think emergency management.
She pays her own and communications pay their own.
Yeah. And of course, Conservation is already out of general supplemental.
But he pays out of his department.
Correct.
So it was just getting it all out of department one.
So my, I would say, my opinion would be to leave it as is and have secondary roads pay there, have assessors pay theirs.
The budget that we worked on was with the departments paying. I mean, that's the way it was discussed in budgeting was my recognition. So if we were to change it, what does that do?
If all of it would then come out of supplemental, which we would have, it might be able to handle it, we may have to do a budget amendment. The secondary roads would have, I don't know, what is your, your ICAP run route about, Adam?
I think it's probably around a one twenty-five to one forty, is that correct, Jay?
I feel like yours was like one forty, like one thirty something last year.
Yeah, yeah. And it'll be different this year because of our equipment changes.
Mm-hmm, so that would, that would be a pretty good size hit to supplemental, and as we try to lower the levy rates and try to get down because of House final seven eighteen, we need to be cognitively of our levy rates.
Agreed. And, and the budget was designed around that. Can we, for next year's budgeting, can we try and incorporate it at that time so that we're doing it that way, then our budget is built around that rather than?
Yeah, I mean, we just met, what, April? So we didn't, Jay brought it to our attention, other counties do that, so we didn't know about it, that we could do it that way.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to keep it the way that we budgeted it, um, because that's the way my brain works. And then next year, if we want to change it to where it all comes out of one, which it all comes out of one, it's just it's through the departments, is my understanding, right?
It's different, out of the different funds, so.
It just takes about a week to, for me to have to go through the whole invoice and break it out. Specifically, every motor reader for Adam, every building for Adam, everything for.
And I can, I agree with you, I think that that's a waste of time. But again, is there a way that ICAP can automate that or make the list easier to go through? And say, hey, here's secondary roads, here is, you know,
someone. I can give Amanda a better list, so it'll show you equipment piece by equipment piece what that cost is.
Yeah, because that shows like what our numbers are, so it has twenty dash, what is that inventory, so I.
So are you gonna get an Excel file of that or something in that nature where you can filter it?
We can request it. We can try that.
It, it, I mean, I'm just thinking that if there's a way that you got an Excel file and then said, hey, you know, column A is the department, and just filtered or sorted it, and took a snapshot of it and did your sum, probably do that in ten minutes.
Right, because that's, um, Joan has been working on making sure that all the item, inventory item numbers are on there.
Yeah, Joan and Lindsay have, I think, are pretty much through that project.
Yeah. Yeah. And so, yeah, if, if ICAP could pull that somehow in Excel, that would be very beneficial to.
Yeah, it doesn't come to us in an Excel form, but I would think there would be a way for them to.
There's gotta be a way to do that.
Generate it.
Yeah.
I'll be in touch with you on that.
Great.
So we need approval of, uh, paying the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year premium of four hundred and twelve dollars. Four hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. With the note that, uh, we may have to amend that, um, after we get the value of the courthouse.
Correct.
I would move to, to pay that premium four hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which is an increase. Uh, for the public, it's an increase of forty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars over last year's.
And, and for the newspaper, uh, I, the ICAP fortune for property casualty is thirty, three hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And for IMWCA, which is workman's comp, forty thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars. I'll second your motion.
All in favor? All ayes? Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I would think mid-August is when we'll know, when they're coming out. So I can work with you on. Given the proper tour.
Sure.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Jay.
Appreciate it.
Okay, to move on to fourteen, review and act on the certified salaries for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Oh, you didn't do enough, did you? Andy Appleson.
Thank you. Hey, excuse me, I'm the air I made. Number fourteen, Andy Apple, buildings and grounds, discuss and act on transferring funds. From general basic to capital projects.
Hi, Rick.
Hello, Andy.
So I'm requesting that we transfer a hundred thousand dollars from general basic to capital projects. I had a surplus in my budget. Because we did not, you know, we have all the ARP funds that we ever ended up using, so we budgeted, knowing that, so that's all we have surplus. I gave you some doodles on the page of what we have left. And with a hundred thousand and after some plans, you should have twenty-four thousand-ish, I mean, all that comes into bills this week. Have to go back into general basic at the end of the year. Any questions?
So. During budgeting for twenty-five, twenty-six, you have, um. For the courthouse building repair, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars already in your budget. And so you want to add this hundred to it?
We'll use the hundred hopefully for. Reporters office down the road and I've been talking to Peggy that maybe until that happens, we could put that into a CD. To, uh, get some interest on six-month CD, correct Peggy? Okay. So that's, we'll save this money for that and a hundred and twenty-five that I have for next fiscal year will cover the remainder of the west side of the building. There's a bathroom. Um, and some other things that will probably come up then. I don't know yet.
You're putting new doors out front too?
Yeah.
When will that take place?
Is the concrete ever done? Have they ever quit training? So that's all scheduled, um, so yeah.
And then you're going to make this other door as the employee entrance.
Read the south door as well, and so a hundred and twenty-five will cover that. So there will be plenty of things that we're going to use to work and I'm hoping to save this hundred for. Reporters office someday. That is the plan.
Is that capital projects separate from general basic?
Yeah, yes, it is.
It should be one, one twenty-seven.
See, they have all that interest by then. So that's my. I have no issues with that.
I have no problem with it. The motion on this?
We'll do a resolution next month.
Yeah, I forgot that word, sorry.
Okay.
All right, we'll put on the agenda for next Monday for resolution. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Andy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, review and act on certified salaries for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Yes.
Yes, um, Dev sent it in an email to us.
And then it's also in the packet.
There was a change. What was the change?
Um, one of the secondary roads guys had a zero percent increase. So I called Adam. I called Adam and.
Right? No.
Wednesday. I called Adam to ask. Asked a question and he said that should be changed. So he changed it right away and then. Another email. With these.
Yeah, the new, the new list then does show Michelle Murphy's payroll adjustment. Um, the sheriff's department shows their union contracts and their, um, their wages. The. Jail also had some adjustments through their union contracts and longevity. Then secondary roads had some adjustments with, not adjustments, but what is it? They have time, um.
Longevity.
Longevity.
Their longevies is what puts them normally like that two point oh seven or two point, you can see Ross's, I remember him specifically because I looked at that. So their base wage and then they get longevity after that. So they might be moving, depending on how many years they've been here.
So if there's somebody that had less than two percent?
It's because they never get any more longevity anymore. So like Terry's like one point nine nine or something like that.
Nine, one point nine eight. Yeah, okay.
He's maxed out on longevity.
Then the two of them that are a little over, there's one that's three point eight six, they're on their probation period.
Yes, correct.
And. Andrea, did they do?
Yeah.
That during budgeting time?
Yes. I budgeted for her full amount. She's still inside her probation period too. So it's Jim Hughes. Ethan or Houston. I always put on the Excel that I send to Deb off to the right side what they will be at certain days, but I don't know if you see that or not.
No, but this is a, come here with this one. So she's, she's not at this number right now.
No, that is the budgeted number.
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
It's up to that number.
Up to.
Yeah.
So that should not then be on this sheet because this is what we're feeling as of right now.
Exactly, but I don't, I put, like I say, I put off to the right side normally.
Okay.
So I don't know how she represents this to you.
Line numbers that.
It's under secondary roads, Andrea Jones. Because we, um, this is what I wrote down during budgeting time last year. Is that we have you at your contract and then two percent for everyone else.
July one salary will be fifty-seven, six sixty, but up to the fifty-nine, one sixty. Because you guys don't normally approve the fifty-nine, one sixty, since you've already approved it in her offer letter.
Right.
So it's just an adjustment that I make in house that says, I get it. I, I understand.
Certified salaries at July one is what it should be, so.
Yeah, but I don't, I think it's being misrepresented when I'm not, you're not seeing the comments.
Right.
So.
So that line item should be what, fifty-seven one?
I think it's a fifty-seven. Yeah.
Fifty-seven, six sixty.
And you'll do the in-house one when she meets that.
Well, you also have, like I said, you also have, I don't know how you want to do this. I mean, because you've already approved that. She gets her adjustment July one. But then you also have.
Two percent, but then after she gets.
Yeah. You also.
We do.
Tim Hamilton, who July one wage will be twenty-eight, thirty with an overtime rate of forty-two, forty-five.
They has thirty.
What did you say his was?
One twenty-eight, thirty and forty-two, forty-five for an overtime rate. And Jim Hughes, July one rate wage of twenty-seven, eighty-four with an overtime rate of forty-one, seventy-six. Not sure why the comments aren't being presented to you.
When there will be a place for comment section, but. When there will be a place for comment section, but.
And then, uh, Nathaniel, um, I'm sorry.
Vento?
Nate Vento?
Yeah.
Is, does his.
So he gets.
It includes a separate raise. Would that be the July one or is that?
His anniversary date, he gets a, uh, six percent step for, uh, three days. Because he started before July first.
Okay.
Um, and then he gets the, um. He has a catch-up raise in there to catch up to the other guys because he's so far behind them. He's basically has the same certifications that they do, just not the experience. And then he gets the counting to the present raise. July one.
So that.
He waits about thirteen and a half percent.
Correct. Okay, so that is the July one. Got it.
And we've discussed that. We can either pay it all out, one lump sum at the end of his five years, which would be a. Or we can catch it up little by little as we go. My suggestion would be to catch it up little by little as we go. So we don't get it.
I'll make a motion to approve the certified salaries for July one, twenty twenty-five with the, uh, corrections to the secondary, the three employees from secondary roads. To reflect their July one salary.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All ayes? Okay, number seventeen, review and take action on resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five for interfund operating transfers for fiscal year. Twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, can I make one comment? Your previous item, I would request that your comments be put on next year's. Uh, so you can see those comments. We don't have this confusion again.
Is it just your department or is it everybody?
It could be anybody that has a step. Because you have that mid-year that we have like kind of a twelve-month probation, so you might have that. So, sorry to interrupt.
Nope, not a problem.
It will go down on the appropriation.
This is just the resol- resolutions that the department has. We'll have money to spend so we can appropriate all the money in our system for next year. From what you guys talked about and discussed in the budget.
Nine forty-five.
Two minutes.
Excuse me.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, resolved for interfund operating transfers.
It's extreme resistance.
Did we finish this team?
No.
No, we have not done that.
So appropriate money.
We're appropriating money.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four to appropriate money for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second thing.
Betty, how do you vote?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
I vote aye. Ashley?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, we'll go back up to the nine forty-five, I believe it's that time, close enough. Review and take action on the twenty-eighty agreement for mental health advocate services provided to Humboldt, Pocahontas, Webster and Wright counties.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. Um. Started discussions related to this, um, sharing agreement back in February, just, um, the history, you know, it started in. Twenty seventeen, um, I began serving in Webster County and then, um, mid. Twenty eighteen in the three smaller counties. They decided to share mental health advocate when the advocate who was serving the Humboldt, Pocahontas and Wright counties retired. Um, and Webster County, um, was looking to, um. Have an advocate serve that was a little closer in proximity to their county. They were sharing with some other counties that were further south down by the Des Moines metro area, so. So that's when the agreement started, um, in twenty twenty-one, I want to say, the agreement changed. Related to reimbursement between mental health regions because two of the counties switched to Rolling Hills Mental Health Region and to CICS region. So the regions, um, on June thirtieth ceased to exist due to state legislation, um. That, um, created a new administrative service organization that'll serve the state. So the, the sharing and reimbursement agreement for mental health advocate. Um, will terminate on June thirtieth and so we created a new agreement, um, hoping that the counties would like to keep what's currently in place. Um, the plan as of right now is for Humboldt County to seek reimbursement from the administrative service organization on behalf of all four counties, um. As it's, you know, doing now with the mental health regions. So really, that is, that is the primary thing that changes, um, with this agreement. It's just really to keep in place what has been in place for, um, for the past several years, so. Um, so we'll see. We haven't gotten a lot of direction unfortunately from the administrative organization as to. You know, what they're going to require or want or the process for seeking that reimbursement. So my hope is it's not very administratively firm some, but, but that remains to be seen, so. So, so, yeah, I, that's, that's a brief explanation.
And, and so we, last week or two weeks ago, we cited. We voted to stay.
With CICS.
With CICS through December thirty-first because there will be bills. That have not been processed and go through and, and this shouldn't affect that in any way.
No, no, so, so the advocate, um, the advocate amounts or, or, or funding for through June thirtieth will. Still be paid by the regions and then starting July one, um, for those we will seek reimbursement through the ASO. And actually, you know, it, it wasn't very challenging really at all because at first we were thinking, oh, boy, if the two county, two counties are going to this region, two are going to that. But it really was a very smooth transition at that point in time, um. You know, Humboldt, Humboldt puts out the total amount, you know, salary by the Iber's, um, insurance and then, um. Mileage got billed separately to each of the regions, but they sent out a monthly amount and then the regions allocated that against the client served, so. It'll be very similar, except now it'll go, um, all four counties are once again in the same behavioral health district, um, through the ASO, so, yeah, so. Helpful in the transition because you're, you know, even though it's statewide, you know, you'll still have the same point per. Helpful in the transition because you're, you know, even though it's statewide, you know, you'll still have the same point person within this district. For all four counties, if there are issues or questions or things you need help with, so.
I would make a motion to approve the twenty-eighty agreement. For mental health advocate services provided to Humboldt, Pocahontas, Webster, and Wright counties.
I will second that motion.
All in favor? All ayes. Thank you.
And I will say that this is kind of a working document because nobody really knows how. The reimbursements, the ASO is going to do on the, everything is so new that. At, at a point, we may have to review it and make some adjustments to it. It's, but this is just going to get us started for July first. And see what happens, so.
I think there's a lot of unknowns right now, yeah.
Yeah.
There really weren't, the only changes and I will go to two-nine because really what the advocate does and how we operate are really defined by Iowa code two-two-nine and. There were no substantive changes related to mental health advocate with that house file, I mean, it was really strictly. Language changing, taking the mental health region. Language out and putting in ASO, I mean, just, I'm speaking only in terms of things related to. Advocate, but, yeah, for now, you know, as Betty said, that can always change, so we'll just, you know, do the best we can and. You know, continue to call it well.
But I think there's, it could be a point where. This, the state and the ASO will. I don't know if they'll regionalize the mental health advocates also, I hope not, I hope we can keep. Local because.
Sure.
I, I think it better serves our citizens that way.
I agree.
Very nice speech.
And thank you.
I will, I'm gonna reprint, I, because I did front and back and I don't know if they like front and back.
Supposed to be single sided.
As I was investing.
You might have one in his box. Or his too.
Okay.
I do have a single sided.
Do you?
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
Next got one too.
You were like double sided. He has a single sided.
I got single sided.
Alright.
Do you want me to sign this and give it to you to get the other ones to sign?
And then it has to be notarized. So if you want to sign it and then.
I'm a notary. We're all notaries now.
So you want me to just come up there and. Babe, get over here and watch it.
Now my cat, you can just take it with you and.
Let me talk to her.
I'll let you.
Recce, do recess and then she can get her stamp.
Make sure that everything.
To notarize it.
Fine, we'll be in a five-minute recess. Okay, we're back in session. Number eighteen, appoint supervisors to count cash. Review and take action on resolution twenty twenty-five. For interfund operating transfers for fiscal year twenty twenty-five twenty twenty-six.
Just so we can move money from. Your general basic or general supplemental or rule basic to those departments. And it's up to.
Yeah, it's.
Public health, if you don't have, you don't have to, agree?
And you don't move their money until they ask for it.
We do the supplemental. Basic, we have not this year at all.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five. Dash twenty-five for interfund operating transfers for fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six.
I second that motion.
Dean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lynn?
Aye.
Betty?
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you. Approve supervisors to count cash for fiscal year and. Not end. I've done it for years. Who would like to do it?
I'll do it. I'll do it.
What does it all entail? You can have the cash.
Discount money.
Make sure, make sure if they have any receipts that if they're supposed to have fifty grand. You know, or fifty bucks in their petty cash. Or, I don't know.
Between the cash and the receipts, it totals up.
It's total up to that.
You gotta do it. Sheriff's Office.
Secondary Roads.
Secondary Roads, treasure, recorder. That's pretty much it, isn't it?
You do the petty cash at this point?
Yeah.
So we do all the petty cash, so I have petty cash.
Sure.
And you gotta be done. By nine o'clock and be down here at the meeting by then.
Well, that's a different day.
There's no.
No, no, is it Tuesday, do you want them to come in Tuesday morning or?
We have to have it July first.
July first.
Yeah. So there'll be no meeting. Before we take any.
So there is no meeting on July first, you have to be in here by eight o'clock. Or July before that.
I would love eight o'clock.
You're, you're thinking about the mid-year one, Rick.
That's just me.
That's just Peggy. That's usually just done on a Monday.
In December.
Yeah.
Yeah, but all the other ones have to be done now.
But not on a Monday, it's, it's whenever July first is.
Yes. Which will be on Tuesday. So. Will we approve that at the next meeting then, or will we need a special meeting for that?
No, they signed the form and it's approved that way because we appointed them to do it.
Okay. So Betty and Ashley will take care of it? Thank you.
Start in Peggy's office.
Please, eight o'clock, please.
She gets a little irritated, you're late.
When I see you walk into a different office first, yeah, I do.
Then me second.
Yeah.
You can come down, we're, we're open at seven, so.
Hey, you can't see us there.
Okay.
Maybe we'll start out at secondary roads then.
There you go.
Betty and Ashley. Thank you.
We need to take action on that, I mean. Or not? Just.
Adam Clemmons.
Quick update, guys are still out on two hundred and seventieth street, we're making some adjustments to their final grade still. Trucks are hauling, spraying bridges, we halted some concrete sand for Ringo's burger for our slurrys or scrub seal for Denko. That we did on the galt blacktop south of southeast galt and three thirty-fifth streets going into Woolstock. Repairs, we did have some water over the roads, so we halted some. Spot rock to those last week. Eighteen workers are completed, we documented those FEMA, those washouts as FEMA, just in case. This becomes, because they've all, sometimes they'll, you know, if we get. A torrential downpour this week, they might move that date back to include those, so we always make sure that. There's any flooding that we've documented properly. We're way down two seventieth still, twenty twenty-five year two rock is seventy-five percent done. The miscellaneous of halt concrete sand, lost quarry, they're working on their dirt work, so on the corners, getting them shaped up. Doing that before the concrete paving will come in, they approach us, so, because they gotta get that up there and then they'll. Match that grade, so, and then, sorry, go ahead. No, contractor's doing it, PCI.
PCI is doing it.
PCI is doing it. Taylor Avenue Bridge, they're working on the existing bridge removal, they're flooded out currently with backwater from the Iowa, so. They had a, they were trying to make a pad on the. Southwest corner and to be able to put their crane and be able to reach. All the, the areas with a concrete bucket, but that's flooded right now, so they're not working. We keep an eye on it for them and let them know when they can get back in. That's all I have, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Hey, man, do. Do you need to keep this for received and I don't know if we should have went with that? Thing I just signed and notarized?
There, that was a two, that was a double sided.
Yeah.
And a signature, that, so no, that's, that was just an extra, you can throw that one.
Great, thank you.
That was a copy I made for everyone.
Okay, thank you. Old business. New business.
Darren Seaman and I had a meeting on Wednesday, Wednesday with the. Food pantry here in town and they, they discuss food access and they're trying to figure out how they can. Reach more people and to make a bigger impact. So it's just kind of a. Just a gathering right now to go over ideas and Sarah Gorder County.
Hancock, Franklin.
Hancock and Franklin Counties, Food Pantry Director, we're also there to kind of coordinate with each other and talk about. What they can do.
Under old business. We did receive opinion concerning whether or not. The siren could be taken care of through township truck. Pumps and that is not recommended either by the Department of Management. Or in accordance with Iowa code. It has something to do with population, I forget, three hundred thousand.
It was three hundred thousand population wishes.
Yeah, so. So I guess.
I contacted Steve Bean.
Okay.
And gave him that information that grant township trustees were not going to be able to help. With, with paying for the siren. So moving forward, there's still not an answer as to, because they're, they're kind of standing with they don't want to help, and I says, well, I guess at the time. If the siren doesn't work anymore. You may not get a siren. Or would have to make a decision at that time. The conservation, I talked to Eric and, and he said that the sheriff's department and the. Communication center contacts. The employees at conservation and they go around to the campsites, so. So we really don't have a good answer, we don't have it in writing yet, who's the owner and who would, you know, help with maintenance. If, if maybe emergency management can continue to watch for grants. Or something like that, or charitable foundation, they apply for a grant, you know, to help pay for that siren. I know that we paid fifty percent of it, the general basic. Back in two thousand, I forget, or eight, I think it was. And but I think we have to be cognitive of, you know, if, what if Morris Lake wants it next? You know, Walleye wants one next, we have to. Just always be cognitive of. Where we're spending general basic dollars, because that's specifically for an area.
Right, I'm conflicted with. With that, from one aspect, my thought is, okay, the siren goes down or quits working or it doesn't. At the test per month, it doesn't work. We've got a lot of. Residents that are out there besides the campers and so. One of the things that I recall that falls under. Supervisors is safety of the county. Again, being fiscally responsible is also falls into that category, but. I wouldn't want it to be on my watch, the tornado went through Lake Cornelia and. The siren wasn't working, so. It's working, that's the good news.
We don't have one as rural people.
No, I didn't have one when I lived in the rural either.
You have one up in Minnesota?
No, we do not, but there's so many lakes up there, Adam, that. I mean. Literally within. A mile radius, there's probably. Four other lakes that have holes around them, so.
But do they have? The, the tornado sirens where you could hear that one from those other lakes?
There's one in the city of Battle Lake. No, I don't, no, you wouldn't be able to hear that if you were out on the lake, no. So.
I didn't mean to start a whole firestorm about this, but I was trying to be proactive.
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
And looking forward, if the siren works another forty years, great. I just need, wanted to know. Who gets the bill? Moving forward. I don't know what maintenance is going to cost, electronic engineering is coming out. But I also know that, like, was stated, if that frequency goes away. Then they're gonna have to upgrade and then who's gonna pay for it? On a side note. I think the rest of the county, if they have their own siren, you guys are gonna open up a whole can of worms. And you're gonna have a system-wide county with tornado sirens and where does it stop? Because I called a few people and I said, how far can you hear the Lake Cornelia siren? And the one guy said he can hear it at his house, which is. A mile south of Elm Lake. And he said, if it's a calm day, if he's outside.
Mm-hmm, right, if it's windy.
Yeah. So.
But they're designed to be heard outside, it's an outdoor warning for the red indoor.
Right.
Right. So I mean, you, you have code red for indoor or you have a level B for indoor.
Yes.
But they're designed to be outdoor.
Outdoor, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, don't get me wrong.
No, no, I, I guess, yep.
I just need to know who's gonna pay for it. It came out of our budget this time, fine.
And you'll find out how soon on the.
After electronic engineering comes up.
It is on the county insurance, it costs fifty bucks, so.
But then you'll find out from the other company that's gonna come inspect it, what it would take to inspect it or.
What an annual maintenance would cost, whatever.
And we can go through that when he finds that out. Oh, it's in, and I agree with what everybody's saying because if we take care of that one. Who's to say the cities ain't gonna come in and say, okay, you take care of ours?
The city wanted, but you might have Morris Lake or want something or Walleye.
Elm Lake, there's a lot of cabins down at Elm Lake.
Elm Lake, yeah.
Full-time resident.
Yeah.
On, on the side note, the email that I sent you guys, I got contacted by the fire chief from Clarion. And the lake has three dry hydrants that they can draft water off of. And I'm not sure if they were drafting during a fire or if they were just stopped practicing. But one of their trucks wouldn't stay. The draft kept breaking. So when they got it back, they had a technician come out, looks at pumps and the interior screen was full of zebra mussels. Shells. I don't know what it costs to fix the pump, you know, whatever, it might have just been a simple clean. But that's a problem because the lake is always gonna have zebra mussels in it, any, any municipality that draws water out of a water body that has zebra mussels. Has the same problem, so there's gonna be annual maintenance on those dry fire hydrants, which brought up who owns them? We don't own them, we didn't install them, the lake association, I just directed the fire chief there, I did do some background. With the archives at the monitor and it said that they got a statewide grant. From the DNR put in dry hydrants on lakes. It was about a hundred thousand dollars statewide. Who did, the lake association or, or? The Clarion. Fire, the.
Fire Department.
The, I don't know, was it district or just between Clarion and Belmont? But then they also talked about extra money that had to be paid statewide, about forty thousand dollars to put in these dry fire hydrants. I do remember that the time the push was if they have access to the dry hydrants, it caused the property. Insurance for fires up to, to be calculated at a lower rate because there was that water that was available. So. Two of the three dry hydrants are on the DNR property that is leased or managed by the conservation.
Is it only on Lake Cornelia or does Walleye or?
None of those have a dry hydrant, there is a dry hydrant south of town on. Yep. Anderson, on, you know. Where Ken.
Oh, Chapman's.
Chapman's, yeah, it was a dry hydrant there, that was the first one that went in.
Okay.
I don't, I assume the fire department owns that one or, you know, but they shouldn't have a problem with zebra mussels there, so.
What, how does a dry hydrant work? I mean, what?
So. So, the way I understand it is there's a hydrant that the fire department, correct me if I'm wrong. Fire department has a hose that they connect to the pumper truck. There's a. Tube that goes, extends out into the lake and I think it's probably in four or five feet of water with a screen at the end of it. I don't know how big a screen or whatever. The way I understand it is they back flush first to blow the pipe out.
Mm-hmm.
And then they can start sucking back in, and I believe they transferred to. That square thing that you guys set up.
Big tank.
But then, if it's a rural fire, yes, I mean, if it's a, probably a house fire.
If it's a house fire, they just stay connected to the pumper.
Yeah, yeah, you try to just stay connected to the pumper, it just depends on how they, how many, and how many responding, uh.
So the screen that's plugged is the one that's out in the lake?
The screen that was plugged was the screen interior on the fire truck.
Yeah, zebra mussels are microscopic when they.
Are young.
When they're young, and so they will go through a, a screen that's protecting, you know, fish or something from coming in there, um. But. But they grow and they attach to anything, I mean, the inside of that pipe, I'm sure is lined with zebra mussels.
Yeah. And.
How, how could, I guess my other question is, is there like some sort of rotor router that you can go in there and send that down through there and break those up?
Isaac, I suggested a, uh.
Tire.
Well, tires, if you could backfeed a line to the pump end. And tie tires on it, similar to like what they would do on a culvert. And pull them out. I don't know, or a high pressure. Whatever, run it down in there. But it's always gonna be a problem.
Yep.
And. I mean, we're talking yearly, because we put the docks in and the spring, they don't have any zebra mussels on and we pull them out.
They got them.
They got them, so.
And how big do they get, I guess?
About the size of your thumbnail is a big one, the problem with them is they will attach and reattach and reattach to.
They clump together.
They clump together. And then they die and then the shells. Yeah.
So you don't know where the end of that pipe that's in, like.
You could find, you could find it by when they backwash.
When we backwash it, you'll, you'll see bubbles and stuff come up and then you, if we get enough pressure, we'll have water actually kind of sheet up.
And, and is that a hard pipe or is that a, like a?
It's all like a hard PVC.
Yes, schedule eighty.
I didn't know if it was a situation where you could. Have it come up out of the water with a, with a. Of something and then if there's a fire, you need to use it, you let it down into the water.
You're still gonna have zebra moss.
Yeah.
But not inside the pipe.
Once you, oh.
Once you soak the water.
Once you soak the water, and you gotta test it every year, but see what you're saying.
Yeah, so a retractable.
Yep.
Suction pipe.
Right, so you don't, you pull it up so that's out of the water, and then when you're gonna use it, you let it down into the water.
I think it's probably out. Seventy five feet.
Somewhere in there.
Oh.
So it's not just like off the shore.
Five feet, walk out there and go look at it.
They had the, the TracO when they were putting it in, the TracO was over the tracks and up to the bottom of the cab when they were putting it in and he was reaching out for it. So it's out there at least.
And probably don't wanna, a pole out there at the end of that either. That far out. Okay.
Well, keep us informed on the.
I'll let you know when, and, uh, electronic engineering comes and says what it's gonna cost.
Thank you.
Thank you. Update on meetings. I have, uh, Zoom for U D M O, Ron, I.
I had a Boone River Watership Management meeting. Uh, we held it here because the library wasn't available, uh, only had four, five members, uh. There, so we did not have a court, we couldn't conduct any business, sorry, I mean. So nothing to report from that, and then this week I have. Uh, building families this afternoon, minus on Wednesday. C F R and I D V A on Thursday.
Anything else before the board?
Um, we had, uh. C S C S.
Advisory.
Advisory meeting and, um.
Ashley was at another meeting, so I jumped on.
And, um, there was a lot of technical difficulties because they were trying to transition, so. Even Russell had troubles trying to get on and then I was about three quarters of the way through the meeting and then I got kicked off. And then neither Ashley or I could get back in, so we were just like. But.
And, and that was to discuss like the A S Os or how?
I wasn't able to.
Yeah, it was mainly the, the finishing, uh. The rollout, you know, through December, um, the agenda was very short. Um, and then, um, I asked about the mental health advocate and if that is gonna affect. How the new operation is and, um, they, they didn't really have a good answer, they, it's, everything is so up in the air yet that. It's, you know, you're just kind of, kind of a day, yeah, kind of a day by day, and then, you go ahead.
Yeah, I called Russell and he said you and I cannot tell you how many other people have asked me that same question. And he said, I really don't have an answer and I wish I did.
That's the reason the twenty eighty agreement is to get us started July one and it could change.
Right.
And be, it's a very moving document.
Anything else before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, what's that chat up there, Dean?